We'll call this meeting at Lima City Council's order. We'll begin tonight's meeting with the invocation by Counselor Gordon, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Dear Father in heaven, we come to you in Jesus' most precious name. We first pray for our council and our administration in this city to make wise decisions and follow your will. We also pray for peace in our city in this season. We also pray for the people that are in need in this region, that are out there lost and maybe this time isn't quite as blessing as it is for us. We also thank you for this season because this season, more than any other season, brings people from everywhere together in peace. And that, again, is what we are asking for you to bring to Lima, Ohio. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a clerk call the roll.
Mr. Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Gordon, excuse me, Counselor McLean.
Here.
Counselor Lo.
Here.
Counselor Crager. Counselor Adams.
Here.
Counselor Glenn.
Here.
Counselor Miles.
Here.
Are there any amendments to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mr. President, we need to add Josiah Matthews, he's going to be speaking on Ohio Medical Marijuana Program, to the privilege of the floor.
Motion, the second, is to add Josiah Matthews to the privilege of the floor. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Under privilege of the floor, first, we have Sergeant Jason Garlock.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Good evening. I'm here to speak about the 2016 year for the Community Police Program. The community-oriented police program for the city of Lima strives to work in partnership with the residents of Lima to combat crime, the fear of crime, and neighborhood decay. The Lima Police Department COP program focuses on building relationships and forming partnerships with members of the community. And for the past 12 months, the Lima Police Department has strived to make connections to outreach within the Lima community. Our officers have conducted door-to-door surveys, conducted countless foot and bike patrols, held various community events within their neighborhoods, and formed social media pages, all with one goal in mind: to connect with the residents within their neighborhoods and to be accessible to the citizens in various ways. The Lima Police Department makes it a priority to hear from the citizens firsthand just what the problems are within their neighborhoods, instead of the police department deciding for the citizens. This program only works if both the police department and the community come together to find solutions as equal partners. The COP program, once again, has put a face and name to an officer for people in the neighborhoods. No longer do residents merely see a side profile of a police officer in a cruiser driving past them on the road. The neighborhood officers are people, mothers and fathers, counselors, confidants, and social workers. People get to know them by their first names, they know their children, their likes, their dislikes, and they have their phone numbers memorized. When a problem arises within their neighborhoods, the officer is the first person the residents call for help or advice. The COP officer wears many different hats, but Dunn are more important than facilitator. It is the job of the COP officer, when problems arise, that may not fall under the law enforcement umbrella, that we have to know where to turn and where to refer the citizens to another resource or agency. We need to be able to connect with people in need to the appropriate resource. We have to be the tie that binds all aspects of the community together. We have taken measures to undertake this process by forming partnerships with Coleman Professional Services, the Lima City Schools, and Crime Victim Services. And over the next several years, we hope to continue down this path and form even more partnerships with business professionals within the community. Through the rest of my report, I've highlighted a lot of our successes throughout the year. I won't read them all, but please, at your leisure, go through them. I did want to comment on one other additional program that I'm very proud of and am very excited to be a part of, and that's the School Resource Officer Program in the city schools. For me, it was a very easy transition because this is just another form of COP that I'm lucky enough to be a part of. And I have to give thanks to Chief Martin and Superintendent Ackerman for forming this alliance and creating this program. The last thing that I did want to comment on is myself and all my COP officers, we're all certified Women's RAD Self-Defense Instructors, and we will be putting on a series of RAD classes free of charge for the public. We have two sessions planned in January. Session one is going to be January 14th and 21st, and it's going to be from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00 on both of those days. Session two will be on the same days, January 14th and the 21st, from 1:00 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. This will be held at St. Mark's. You will be able to register for this program. There will be a link on the Lima Police Department Facebook page that you can click on, and you can register like that. There will also be additional. We have a high demand for these classes, and we're doing the best we can to keep up. We will be hosting another one in February or March, and we'll be hosting that at Freedom Elementary. I don't have all the details, but when I do, I will get them to you. Is there any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next, under privilege of the floor, is Josiah Matthews. Mr. Matthews, I'll ask you to state your name and address for the record when you get to the podium, so that Sally can record.
Hello, thank you for your time. I'm Josiah Matthews, 1318 Chestnut Street, Lima, Ohio, 4504. Season's greetings to all of you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. It's been a while since I've seen many of your faces, but I'm blessed to be here today. Thanks. I'm here to share information and solicit community feedback, in hopes that, together, we can work as a community to help influence the rules that are being set to govern the State of Ohio Medical Marijuana Control Program. I would like to see this community ultimately allow zoning for medical marijuana, and over the coming months, I think we can present a good case for that support. Tonight, however, I am asking that we actually work to help put voice to the process of implementing the law. I'm asking that we formally detail rule proposals and submit recommendations to the state. In my experience, many communities seem to not be aware, as far as individual citizens, that there is a lot of open dialogue being requested from the state, so we actually have the opportunity to give our input on the law. I left the most recent State of Ohio Medical Marijuana Advisory Committee meeting this past Thursday actually encouraged. I'm optimistic about our state's approach to making this the best program that it could possibly be for our state, because they have displayed openness and transparency so far. They've welcomed a lot of feedback from stakeholders already, and they have implemented some of those changes already. Recommendations, again, have already been made, changes have already been made. We are in the second round of public dialogue, and that's going to last until January 13th. So we don't have a lot of time to really gauge a lot of feedback. The state only received 73 pieces of feedback from September 2nd of this year to date last December 14th here. So it is my goal to reach out to community members and, after talking to Councilwoman Miles, to take a lot of the recommendations from the Safety Committee and actually format that into recommended changes and send it to the state. So we're going to have a meeting on Thursday, the 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. at the Lima Public Library. That's going to be the first of hopefully three or four, as many as we can squeeze in before the 13th. We're going to just welcome people who time to actually review the proposed rules there at the library, make recommendations, and we're going to help them draft some of those changes and send those back to the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Next is the consent calendar.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that item A be received, filed, and approved.
Second.
And item B be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive, file, and approve item A and to receive and file item B. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number one.
From the Director of Community Development regarding legislation to place tax assessments.
Mr. President.
Mr. Glenn.
I move that communication number one, receive and file, legislation on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number one. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number two.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Ms. Adams.
I move that communication number two be received and filed, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number two. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number three.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for temporary appropriations.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number three be received and filed, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number three. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number four.
From the Finance Director regarding the mayor's budget estimate.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that item, communication number four, be received and filed, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
Oh, this one? Okay. And I'd like to amend it to include referring it to the Finance Committee.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number four and to refer it to council's Finance Committee. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number five.
From the City Engineer regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with Lawson Brothers Construction.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number five be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number five. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number six.
From the Deputy Director of Parks regarding legislation to apply for accept and expense CBB grant dollars.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number six be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number six. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number seven.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into an agreement with the Department of Natural Resources.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number seven be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number seven. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number eight.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Hewlett Packard.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number eight be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number eight. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number nine.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Sentry Equipment.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number nine be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number nine. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 10.
From the Director of Public Works regarding legislation to enter into a contract with Insight Public Sector.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that communication number 10 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 10. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 11.
From the Director of Human Resources requesting legislation to enter into contract with Patrick Staffing.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that communication 11 be received and filed.
Second.
Need to authorize legislation.
Authorize the law director to prepare legislation.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 11 and to authorize a law director to prepare the necessary legislation. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 12.
From the Mayor regarding legislation for the Chief of Staff position.
Mr. President.
Mr. Lo.
I move that communication number two be received and file, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 12. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 13.
From the Mayor regarding merit increases.
Mr. President.
Counselor Lo.
I move that communication number 13 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 13. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 14.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for budget cash transfers.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 14 be received and filed, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 14. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 15.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for 2016 budget amendments.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 15 be received, filed, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 15. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 16.
From the Finance Director regarding legislation for 2016 budget cash advances.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that communication number 16 be received, filed, legislations on tonight's agenda.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 16. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 17.
From Chief Black regarding legislation to apply for a safety capital grant program.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that communication number 17 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 17. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 18.
From the Law Director regarding legislation to continue contracts with Barnes and Thornburg and Frost and Brown Todd.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that communication number 18 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication number 18. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Communication number 19.
From the Law Director regarding the number of ordinances since 1983.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that communication number 19 be received and filed.
Second.
The motion, the second, is to receive and file communication 19. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Mr. McLean.
I'd like to congratulate our law director for being a busy man. He's been very busy this year.
As is council.
Yes, we have. That's 281 ordinances, which is the fifth most of any year given, so good job.
I just want to point out, in case anyone was really keeping tabs, it was five more ordinances than 2015, so it was a busier year. Tony, thank you very much for this report. It is kind of, you kind of go through the meetings and whatnot, but when you see the tabulation, it's kind of interesting to see, so I enjoy getting these reports.
Mr. President, I would be remiss if I didn't share with you an observation from one of the mayor's staff members who questioned whether it was the fifth best or fifth worst year.
I believe, I believe that the term that is appropriate is busiest. Okay? Fifth busiest. So we'll let the pundits debate on best or worst. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Next, we have reports of officials. Chief Black. Lima Fire Department Annual Report.
Thank you, Counselor Nixon. Everybody here in council here a couple weeks ago received our 2015 annual report of Lima Fire Department. I just want to go through a few things here with you tonight. Basically, for those of you that, the fire department is really split into four different areas. We have the administrative branch of the fire department, which consists of the fire chief, the secretary, and two deputy chiefs. One deputy chief's in charge of administration, basically personnel, station maintenance, and vehicle maintenance, and various other duties. The other deputy chief is the operations chief. He's in charge of all of the suppression operations, EMS operations. He's in charge of training and EMS. We have an arson division, which consists of one full-time arson investigator, Toby Jenkins, and we have two shift personnel that back him up when he's unable to respond to calls, and that is J.R. Long, and also Doug Corwin, Lieutenant Doug Corwin. Lieutenant Doug Corwin is also in charge of our juvenile fire setters program. And this juvenile fire setters program works in conjunction with the juvenile court system, and they work with the juvenile court system not so much as into file criminal charges to juveniles, but in treating of juvenile fire setters. The treatment is the main concern of this job. We also have our inspection bureau and education bureau, which consists of inspectors Chris Jackson and Warren Pugsley. And then we have the suppression and response part of the fire department, and that's the ones you see in the fire trucks and the ambulances going every day. That consists of three battalion chiefs, five captains, seven lieutenants, and 53 firefighters. So we have 75 employees as of right now. I want to go through some of the projects that were completed in 2015, and those projects were completed only with the support of council and administration. Stations number two and three, which is both on the south end and the north end of the city, they received all new replacement, commercial replacement windows. The guys definitely notice the difference, especially this time of year. I wanted to say that in, especially in the north end station, in station number three at Robin West, the windows that were replaced at that station on the apparatus floor were still the single-pane windows that were put in the station back in 1961. The central fire station received all new garage doors in 2015. They replaced doors, most of the doors were the original doors to the station that, when it was built back in 1975 and 76. They are definitely a lot more energy efficient than with the doors we had on there. So we're expecting, you know, pretty good savings in our energy bill. We put a new roof on the host tower at Central Station, and we replaced a couple sections of concrete on our front apron. The front apron of that station, that dates back to the originals, when the station was built in 75 and 76, and it's deteriorating. The biggest project that we had in 2015 was through an AFG grant. All three fire stations received new fires, new sprinkler system and a fire alarm system. That was a $257,000 project, of which $230,000 was paid through an AFG grant, federal AFG grant. In 2015, as far as vehicles that was purchased, we purchased a new 2015 Ford Expedition, it's an EMS chase vehicle. This vehicle was bought to try to extend the life of our heavy rescue vehicle. Our heavy rescue vehicle is 12 years old, and it has over 9,000 hours on it as of today. So we're trying to extend the life of that large vehicle, which is, to replace that vehicle today would be probably in the neighborhood of $550,000 to $600,000. Also, when we purchased that chase vehicle, we purchased what is called a Zoll Auto Pulse Resuscitation System. And what this is, is it is a machine that does CPR instead of the guys doing it manually. We've purchased one in 2015, and we also purchased one this year, and we've had great success in using it on people that are in cardiac arrest. We've actually brought back people back from cardiac arrest, full cardiac arrest with this machine. We also did order two staff vehicles that we did obtain this year for the deputy chief's positions. One of the vehicle actually gives us a backup command car when our command car is down for repairs. I want to go through a little bit about some of the rewards that some of our guys did and received in 2015. Captain Jack McDermott was the Lima Noon and Surtoma Club Firefighter of the Year. Firefighter Matt Parker. Firefighter Matt Parker is also on the Allen County Bomb Squad, and he also has a dog that's a bomb-stiffing dog. He received the Lima Allen County Safe Community Coalition Safe Community Award for 2015. Also, the Lima Fire Department Honor Guard presented the flag at the Cincinnati Reds game on July 31st of 2015. Finally, I'd like to discuss our call volume in 2015. Just a little bit of history. In the mid-19, early mid-1990s, the fire department pretty much got out of the EMS response business. And in 1994, the Lima Fire Department responded to 942 calls of service. In 2004, the late 1990s, we started to get back into the first responder business on major medical calls. In 2004, we responded to 1,999 calls of service. In 2015, that response was 5,106 calls for service. That's a 540% increase in calls since 1994, and a 250% increase in calls since 2004. We've already surpassed that number this year, so we're going to probably increase another 4% in our call value, and it's probably going to be somewhere between 5,300 and 5,400 calls for service this year. That's about all I have. Everything's pretty much in the report. Sorry, I didn't, I wasn't here earlier, a couple weeks ago, I was a little under the weather then, but does anybody have any questions?
Mr. President. Mr. Lo. Chief, I thank you for this report. I do have one question. It has come to me maybe two or three times. There's individuals in our city who are taking advantage of calling our fire department, and they get out there, and there's a couple homes I know that you know of where they're calling sometimes two, three times a day, same residence, and you get there, and it really isn't a thing of importance. What are we doing to rectify that because the cost of...
Well, we have started working with, Counselor, Mr. President, we have started working with the Coleman House as far as some of those frequent flyer calls. You know, this year, the Lima Police Department, or, well, early this year, they started carrying Narcan, and that's a bit, a lot of our problems along those lines are drug-related problems. They affect us just as much as the police department. We have what we call our frequent flyers, and we've been trying to work with the hospitals on this problem, but it's tough. A person calls for a medical treatment, we have to provide that treatment. There's not a mechanism right now where we can say, we're not transporting you. We'll set you up with something else, but by law, if they request to be transported, we have to do a transport to the hospital. It's expensive. It increases the cost to the, you know, as far as healthcare costs, but...
And safety of residents. I guess that's where I'm going with this, because one particular lady says, you know, when she comes, that's a narrow street, and they get calls in that area all the time, and you're standing there, and you're blocked, and you get there, and the lady, actually, she doesn't even get helped into the ambulance. She walks in the ambulance herself.
I've been in the fire service for, well, count my volunteer time, I've been in it for 33 years. I've been with the city almost 28. We've had this issue all 28 years I've been with them. You get to a call, a person really probably doesn't need to go to the ER, but maybe needs some type of assistance. some type of assistance as far as maybe going to a doctor. And they are able to physically get into the unit by themselves. They don't need our assistance. But with, especially with the lack of insurance, the ER is where people go. If they don't have Medicaid, or Medicare, or private insurance, that's where their place of treatment is. So all we can do is provide the service the best we can. I want to say one thing, though, is, you know, our call volume has increased dramatically over the last 10 years, and, and our success as a department depends on everybody here, on all the elected officials and the appointed officials and the department heads. And it's a department you guys need to be proud of. I mean, it's a good department. We've got a bunch of good guys working on our department that take their jobs seriously and provide the best service that they can do with what we have, so.
Mr. President. Counselor Miles.
Mr. Chief Black, I just want to thank you for this. I sat on the couch one night and just kind of leafed through everything here, you know, and I, it was a lot of details in here, a lot of details I wasn't expecting about the police, about the Fire Department here. So I just want to say thank you for, for what you guys are doing there. A city could not function without you, and sometime we take for granted the safety services that you guys provide, you know, even with the flooding, with the cars and stuff like that, you know, those type things, you know. So I really want to appreciate the detail because I'm sure this didn't happen overnight here. Appreciate the details and appreciate all the information.
All right, thank you. Anything else?
Counselor Glenn.
I just have one thing there. The CPR machine.
Yes.
Is that gonna be for everybody one day? That we can use that CPR machine? They know it's very expensive, though.
It's a $15,000 machine. We have two of them in the department right now. We carry one on our heavy rescue because our heavy rescue responds to fire calls and auto accidents. We also carry one on our EMS chase vehicle. We will probably, as funds become available, maybe purchase one or two more as time goes on, but it's worth its money. It's definitely been worth its money. Our guys love it, and the hospitals love it. They end up, you can put a person on that, and if the batteries go down, you just put another set of batteries in it, and it takes off again. We've had where we've had cardiac arrest patients. We get them into the hospital, and they stay on that machine for a period of time until the doctors are able to do something with them.
That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Next, there's been a need for executive session. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I make a motion that we move to executive session for the discussion of real estate and personnel.
Second. The motion in the second is to adjourn into executive session for the purposes of discussing personnel and real estate. We need to have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. We'll adjourn into executive session.
Want to release ourselves from executive session and convene back into regular session of City Council. I make a motion that we do that.
Second.
Motion in the second is to adjourn from executive session and reconvene into regular session. Is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Ordinance 266-16.
Authorizing the mayor to hire a chief of staff at a starting salary in excess of the limit set forth in City Code Section 244.257.
Mr. President. Counselor Low.
I move that ordinance 266-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 266-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 266-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 267-16.
Loving special assessments for property maintenance code charges on premises in the city of Lima, Ohio.
Mr. President.
Counselor Glenn.
I move that ordinance 266, 267-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 267-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 267-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 268-16.
Amending the 2016 annual budget.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 268-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 268-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 268-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 269-16.
Authorizing cash advances from the General Fund to certain other funds and for reimbursement back to the General Fund.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 269-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 269-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 269-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 270-16.
Authorizing the transfer of cash between certain funds as herein described.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
I move that ordinance 270-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 270-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 270-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 271-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with Barnes &amp; Thornburg LLP and Frost Brown Todd LLC.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 271-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second. The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 271-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
Just a quick talk with the Law Director, if I don't mind. Is this like an open contract with them, or do we have a dollar amount that we got set, or?
Mr. President. Law Director.
It is more of an open contract, Counselor McLean. It's just really impossible to know what the value of any of these contracts are because we don't know what all the issues are, so it's an ongoing-type process, if you will.
For everyone out there, this, these are the attorneys we've been using for the EPA issues, sanitary engineer, sewer overflow issues, and the Great Lake water quality incentive, so it's a little bit out of our city league, I think, so that's what it's for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 271-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 272-16.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, receive, and administer a grant from the Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 272 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 272-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 272-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 273-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Hewlett-Packard.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 273-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 273-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 273-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 274-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Century Equipment.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 274-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 274-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 274-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 275-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with inside public sector.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 275-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 275-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 275-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 276-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Lawson Brothers Construction.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 276-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 276-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion?
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
Yeah, I just want to publicly make it be known that this is to replace a shelter house in Cook Park. So hopefully in the spring, we'll have a new shelter house there, along with the restrooms that were built there a year ago, so thank you. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Adams. Is there any further discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 276-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 277-16.
Authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Ohio Department of Natural Resources to accept and administer Ohio Senate Bill 310 grant funds.
Mr. President.
Counselor Gordon.
I move that ordinance 277-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 277-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 277-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 278-16.
Authorizing the auditor to make payment to the State of Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 278-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 278-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Low.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer. Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 278-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 279-16.
Authorizing the auditor to make payment to the State of Ohio Environmental Protection Agency.
Mr. President.
Counselor McLean.
I move that ordinance 279-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 279-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 279-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 280-16.
Authorizing the mayor to apply for, accept, receive, and administer a grant from the State of Ohio Local Government Safety Capital Grant Program.
Mr. President.
Counselor Miles.
I move that ordinance number 280-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 280-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 280-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Ordinance 281-16.
Making preliminary appropriations for current and ordinary expenses of the City of Lima, Ohio, for the period beginning January 1st, 2017, until the annual appropriation ordinance of the City of Lima, Ohio, is in force.
Mr. President.
Counselor Adams.
That was a long one she used.
She did it without stuttering.
I know. I move that ordinance 281-16 be passed on its first reading.
Second.
The motion in the second is to pass ordinance 281-16 on its first reading. Is there any discussion? I'll have the clerk call the roll.
Counselor Gordon.
Yes.
Counselor McLean.
Yes.
Counselor Lowe.
Yes.
Counselor Crayer.
Counselor Adams.
Yes.
Counselor Glenn.
Yes.
Counselor Miles.
Yes.
Counselor Nixon.
Yes. Ordinance 281-16 has been passed on its first reading by a seven to zero vote. Miscellaneous business, I'm going to go first so I get to do something that nobody gets to do.
Okay.
I would like to move that we approve the absence and salary of Counselor Crayer.
Second.
Motion in the second, is there any discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The motion carries. Mr. Gordon.
I thank you, Mr. President, and it's the Christmas season when we all agree on every single thing tonight. It's pretty good. First, I want to make an announcement that the Northside Neighborhood Association is having their meeting on Tuesday, tomorrow night, at 7:00 PM, and they're also having a carry-in at St. Mark's Church on Metcalf Street. At 7:00 PM, yes. And then again, I want to, or not again, but I want to announce that Counselor Miles and I will be working on a, another citywide prayer to get folks from everywhere to come together again to pray for this glorious city of Lima, Ohio. And anybody with an earshot of this that wants to participate, you know, let one of us know because we really would love to have you. Third thing, the firefighter's Christmas party for the kids, man, that was a wonderful, wonderful time. It's still, for me, it don't beat the Fire Ops 101 that I go to, but my grandkids, it was numero uno. They really enjoyed the Christmas party. Maybe my youngest little granddaughter was just a little bit afraid of Santa, but not much, you know, because he was really good. So, you know, I always enjoy being around your guys, the camaraderie, I mean, it's just a fantastic bunch of guys, and I just wanted to thank the chief and make sure you pass it on to all your guys. It was a great time, and very thankful to be a part of that. And before I say be good to each other, I want to wish everybody in this room and everybody within earshot a very merry Christmas, and ask everybody to remember to be good to one another. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Gordon. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mr. President. I also would like to comment about the Santa that you guys had at the fire department. He was probably one of the best Santas that I saw. I mean, he actually sat there and let the kids come to him. He wasn't a scary San. You know, some of them get scared. Some of them, you don't want to sit on his lap. This guy wanted to sit on his lap for a little while. Very, very great program. And you can tell when you talk with the guys there that they are, it's a brotherhood. And I wanted to say that when you were standing up here, that you're right about how they get along with each other, they have each other's back, and that's important. And you see that not only in the fire department, but we see that in our police department. And that's all because of the way we, as employers, take care of them. I mean, you have to make sure that they're happy in what they do. So, I commend you and the police department on the job that you've done this year with your people. And to wish everybody a Merry Christmas on top of that, because this is a season of giving. The giving is from your heart, from your soul, is part of, you know, giving gifts is part of honoring the birth of Christ. So, remember that. We are fortunate that we have Christmas this Sunday, on a Sunday, and I think that's very appropriate for this year. So, I wish every one of you a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I don't think we'll see before the new year comes about, but if I do, I want to say I said it first, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Lowe. Counselor Adams.
Just wanted to wish everyone, everyone else has Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, and remember the reason for the season. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Glenn.
Three minutes, tops. Jesse ain't talking, so I got most time.
You can take it.
Put that bright.
But I thank everyone. Everybody have a Merry Christmas. We got a Christmas, last Christmas party of the year will be at 1:00, Friday at 1:00. We had to counsel it out for the kids because the road was so bad, Saturday. But we add on a big list for new kids that did not get a gift, so we asking everyone to help us out with that if you can. On Martin Luther King birthday this year, January 15th, we'll be having our dinner, annual dinner, and our guest speaker will be Father Ross. So, I'm very happy about Father Ross. He'll be talking about building a bridge, so we glad to have Father Ross there, and the kids, the young city councils are working on that. I want to thank Ms. Jackson. Thank you so much for coming out, Saturday. We got a good team of folks from Ford, the tank plant, and Dana. We all working together. We trying to put some things together. This team is so good. They want to work together with us. I couldn't make it.